Welcome everyone to the city council regular meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order, the time is now three P M. Madam clerk, can you please take role?
Councilmember Gama.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Um, you said regular meeting?
Yeah, sorry.
It's a special meeting.
Oh, my bad, it says.
My apologies.
Just wanted to make sure I'm here at the special meeting.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Um, councilmember McQueen Lejeune.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temp for us.
Here.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present. Alright, we will now hear public comments. Soon participants, please use the raise your hand feature if you would like to comment. You will have three minutes to provide comments. Madam clerk, does anybody in the public have a comment?
There are no public comments.
Okay. Our business item for today is governance role training session one. I will now turn it over to our presenter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate that. I uh, I'm grateful to be with you today. I'm grateful to see you all today. And having heard so much about our city attorney through other circles and these, good to meet our city attorney face to face for the first time. So thank you, thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules. I, I sure do appreciate that. And I also appreciated the opportunity that I had to, to meet all of you. Uh, taking time that day, um, whether here or via Zoom to chat with me um, about the nature of these relationships, uh, our city as a whole. It was very evident to me after speaking with all of you that the one thread that absolutely binds you together is your desire, your genuine and sincere desire to want the best and to try and achieve the best for the city of Port Wineemi. So I, I applaud you for that. Um, I do believe with all my heart that um, you are evidence to me of, of the absolute purest form of democracy. Because people in a representative government like we have often don't have access to our representatives. It's not easy to get to a congressperson. Maybe for some of you it would be or others who have a local person. Uh, you know, even state assemblies, state senate in California or United States senators, United States congresspeople, hard to really feel like they're representing your interests when they have so many to represent. This is different. If I'm a resident of, of Port Wineemi, I might run into Laura at the council member Hernandez at the grocery store, right? I might run into our good mayor at a laundromat or a beach event or something else. And I'm gonna bend your ear a little bit, right? Why can't this happen or that happen and so forth? And people will complain in case you didn't know, right? So you are truly a pure form of democracy and I appreciate that. And, and that's kind of where this story begins. We um, we come together and we're ordinary citizens. Sometimes though, we have extraordinary backgrounds. And in my discussion with you, I learned a bit about each of you and the story that your life tells, your education, your work experience, whatever that is. And we come together with five talented people. And the concern that I run into, not more often than not, but often enough, is that five really capable and talented people come together and can form a rather ordinary governance team. That is the challenge that I run into often, but not more often than not. And there are situations here on your team where you are, I believe, a better than ordinary citizens. I think with some of your backgrounds, you're quite extraordinary. And we need to address some of the things that can help us achieve that same level as a collective. Right? Often, people are driven to be part of something bigger than themselves. I know I've been driven that way and I don't want to project my paradigm as if everybody is. But certainly this is one of those things, the potential for this city to be the best version of it can, it can be with the five of you leading it. And I do mean the five of you because you are the highest level of leadership in this city of Port Wineemi. Um, the potential is immense. It is great. And you can lead us into the best version of the city of Port Wineemi that we've ever been. If not you, then who, right? That's the message. And, and we've put faith in you. And when I say we, it's a reference to the people, right? And, and, and this idea of we form this government not to abdicate our responsibility or our ownership, but because we entrust you with the public trust. And that's where we're gonna start. Once I get through a couple of admonitions, and I'm sure you can see on the screen in front of you here. I don't want any of you to let history rob you of any hope that we can be any different than what we have been. You absolutely can be um, more productive, more efficient, more effective than we have been in the past. You can be equally successful in areas where you've been successful in the past. Cause I don't want to suggest for a minute that you haven't accomplished much because you have. Civic minded people coming together can always accomplish the will of the people when they have their mindset to it and they can remove any artificial obstacles that are placed before them. But some part of our history here has led to the point where on this council there has been experience and experience of dysfunction, disharmony, some dissension and some discord. That does not make you unique. There are many governance teams that experience that and can get past that, right? And so I don't want any of our history to rob us of any idea that we can be, can be a harmonious, effective, productive, efficient dischargers as a governance team and as individual council members. Um, that's my personal maxim, history's to be learned from, not lived in. And you've all heard the other one, the more famous statement about history. Those who fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it. Winston Churchill gets credit for it, like so many other quotes, even though he was not the first person to say it. He did say it. Um, but, but the reality is we can learn from history, so we don't repeat it. But we don't have to live in it either. Let's live in the here forward. We have a finite amount of energy on any given day. Yours is balance between your day work and whatever else you fill your life with and then your civic duty that you commit to this great city and its residents. If we said this bottle represented for us a, you know, full complement of liquid energy that we get on a daily basis. And I recall in my meeting with councilmember Gama, he had a lot of energy. You know, he'd just come in from where he was working and I could feel his energy. And my guess is he probably rides his bike to work and all these other things, no Steve? So we all have a full complement of energy. But all of us, no matter how much we have, when we meet that person that seems to have limitless energy, right? We still have a finite amount. Given how much finite amount we have on a daily basis, why would we waste any of it on things we cannot change like the past? Let's not do that as a governance team. Let's not keep trudging at the past thinking somehow that's gonna benefit our future. Instead, let's become what we call energy efficient human beings. Use our energy here forward, right? Looking at my watch, three oh eight, June twenty seven, twenty twenty three, forward. That's what we do if we want to be professionally fulfilled. One of the characteristics of the happiest people I know, they're energy efficient human beings. They don't waste any of it on the past, not even five minutes ago. With all the talent in this room, we can't even change ten minutes ago, let alone a year ago, six months ago, whenever that thing happened, right? So why waste it? Let's not, let's put ourselves in positions to be successful going forward. And that's what this meeting is about. Being energy efficient human beings, leaving the past where it belongs and moving forward, right? With a set of understanding about how we're going to engage, when we engage, how we engage. And really some reminders. I don't expect that anything I say to a group this experienced like yourselves is gonna be revolutionary or remarkable. But it will help us get on the same page and align our unique paradigm. So don't let history rob you of a different future. Don't keep looking backwards, look forward and use our energy where we can, so finite amount. The, the second admonition I just want to give to you is this one, this Tolstoy, very ironic Tolstoy comment. Everybody wants to change the world, but nobody wants to change themselves. What's the irony? Who's the one person we can change? That's it, ourselves. As I see the mayor pointing to himself, right? That's it. And is that an easy proposition, by the way? When we hit those reset buttons on January one, as many of us do, new year, I'm gonna, I'm gonna own this year. And we set goals. What does the research tell us about the average amount of time that people are able to maintain their commitment to their new year's resolutions? Any guesses? Three months? That's a common guess. That is a guess, that's a common guess. People think three months. I think there's a lot of you out there that are three monthers on those goals, right? The research tells us four days. So madam mayor pro temp, if you're doing it for three months, you're way above average. You really are. Uh, I'm pretty average, I think, when it comes to new year's resolution. So what's my point? Imagine if everybody working for the best interest of the city of Port Wineemi was focused on themselves, starting with this leadership team. You are just focused on you, right? All this introspective analysis going on, right? What can I do to be the best governance team member I can be, to be the best mayor, best council member, et cetera? How am I contributing to the success of this thing we're trying to achieve? How am I, am I an obstacle? Am I part of the problem or am I part of the solution here? If every one of you, and then following your example, every employee of the city and service provider and everybody else were committed on, committed to focusing on themselves. My, oh my, the things we could accomplish if that were the case, right? Amazing things would happen. We'd waste zero energy worrying about, oh, what my fellow officer is doing, right? My fellow patrol officer on my shift, why does he get to come in at such and such a time? How come I don't get these many days off? How come they get to, no, let's just focus on us, what we have control over, how we do our job, how we discharge our duties and responsibilities, et cetera. Sometimes we come to a session like this, we might think, oh, this is not quite what I expected. I'm sure glad that councilmember so and so is here because they need to hear this. In fact, what we really need to be focused on is how am I gonna be part of the best practices we're talking about here? How am I gonna be part of the solutions? If each one of the five of you is focused on that, then we will accomplish much this afternoon. We really will. So I appreciate the opportunity to share that with you. I do feel a little bit like I'm preaching to the choir on some of this stuff, but I want to give us those reminders so we all start on the same page. One other thing before we jump into the first things I want to talk about. In the work that I do, when I'm not doing specific work like this with governance teams, I'm what you call a professional wedge remover, right? My clients call me and they say, hey Jerry, I got this issue going on in my public works department. Can you come in and figure out what's going on with the streets crew? Can you come in and figure out what's going on in my C shift in my fire department? Got a lot of conflict, some turnover, some stress claims. And we come in and figure out what is the source of the conflict? What are the behaviors driving that conflict? How is it being handled by leadership, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? And then by the end we'll know, okay, here's what needs to stop happening, here's what needs to start happening. And one of the things that inevitably comes up, I can't think of a project in the last twenty years that I've been doing this where this slide didn't come up and so I share it with you now. Because I experienced it as I spoke with some of you, how our tone changes when we're talking about certain other members of the council, right? When we're describing what the challenges are and who may be the one creating the challenge. These tones, there's never ever a justification for using these tones. They are ten adverse impact tones. And uh, they usually come up in a way that if we're on the dice like this and you know, we have our, our debate going on, um, even though we have these wonderful, you know, policies and procedures for our council that were amended just about, um, gosh, not even a year ago. And it talks about the civility and the professionalism, et cetera, that needs to transpire. These tones, which are neither civil, nor respectful, right? Nor courteous, still manifest themselves and there's zero justification for it. I believe that the trust that's been placed in you by the members of this residence of this great city and all the other stakeholders who count on you, never in their mind thought, yeah, we want our council member who we supported to be up there using sarcastic tones, right? We want our council member up there to be a negative Ned or a negative Nellie about everything that's being said. We want a condescending or its cousin patronizing tone to exit our council member's voice, right? As they share things. So these are they, condescending, patronizing, angry, sarcastic, judgmental, frustrated, impatient, negative, accusatory and intolerant. And the one I would say that does the most damage by way of city harmony, by way of cultural, you know, climates that allows us to be the best version of us as electeds, appointed or employees of the city is accusatory. The accusatory tone that comes out. People just assume because they think it, that it's universally true. You know, you're not doing X, Y or Z and therefore you don't da 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 da, right? It's an accusatory tone and there's just no place for it. In, in society like this, in a governance team like this where I've met you and I have sensed from each of you, I'm not perfect, I'm not a perfect measure of things, but I have felt from each of you, your impassioned desire to be here for a different civil, uh, civic reason perhaps, but to be here in service to others. We just don't ever need to use these adverse impact tones. Any question about that before I press forward with other matters? I'm not saying you always have to have a Mr. Rogers tone either, right? When somebody upsets you or uses an accusatory tone at you. But I also say that you don't have to mirror that tone back. Somewhere between data input into your personal paradigm, before your data output, which is your reaction or your response, is that golden moment for you to decide or for you to follow a commitment you've already made. You can't decide in the moment. If you decide in the moment, you're gonna lose the battle. You have to have decided well in advance. No matter what people say or how they say it to me, member of the public, fellow governance team member, employee of the city, I'm gonna maintain my civility and professionalism, no matter what anybody else does. And then in the moment you can reinforce it, right? You can reinforce that very thing. So you don't have to be Mr. Rogers when somebody's screaming at you, both barrels of judgment pointed at you. But you absolutely can maintain your civility with a serious tone. I, I don't appreciate the way you're speaking to me. I don't appreciate the tone that you're using and the accusations that you're making. So I'm just gonna step away, alright? There's an okay tone, it's neither friendly nor unfriendly, it's just a serious tone. But going back Adam, we win nothing if we start to fall into these tones. So I shared that with you. Here's the roadmap, talking about the public trust, leaders and leadership, the role of city council, the council manager form of government, couple reminders, things that you know, cause I'm just gonna rely on city of Port Wineemi's municipal code. And then leading by example, the importance of civility and professionalism, reinforcing a couple of things. Supporting and policing one another, a lot of that, right? Can be found at the end of this document. But a lot of it comes in the day to day support of one another and how you connect and how you can remedy things when they go wrong. Some of the stuff that's gonna be talking about conflict prevention, conflict resolution, positively responding to conflict will be in our July twenty fifth meeting, if I have that date correctly. July twenty fifth. I'll, I'll confirm that later. And then some pitfalls to avoid. At the end, there will be pitfalls that we talk about and we may have talked in some of our meetings, not all of them, where we talk about, hey, when I'm out in the world, I'm a council member, I'm the mayor, um, the mayor pro temp, but I'm speaking as an individual, you know, um, isn't that okay? Don't I have the ability to do that? We'll cover some of those in the pitfalls to make sure that we're not doing things in a way that could undermine the collective efforts of this great governance team. So with that in mind, let's start with my favorite bits of the Brown Act. It's just one slide, this is all we're gonna cover in the Brown Act right here is this. Because it's almost poetic in nature, it's in the preamble. Public commissions, boards, councils and other legislative bodies of local government agencies exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. Don't you love that purpose? That's you. You exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. The people do not yield their sovereignty to the bodies that serve them. The people insist on remaining informed to retain control over the legislative bodies they have created. So they have entrusted you. They said, hey, this person, today I'm gonna vote for uh, councilmember uh, Stephen Gama, right, the incumbent, because I believe he will help aid in the conduct of the people's business. Today I'm gonna vote for um, councilmember Mayor Pro Temp Misty Perez because I believe she will help us achieve what's best for the city. They do that and they did that and here you are. And that trust is well placed so long as we discharge the duties and responsibilities in a way that either builds, maintains, at the very least doesn't erode the public trust, right? And there are different ways that that can happen. So the people's business, that's what you're here for. And there's a number of questions we can ask to that end, right? To, to be successful at it. And when you take your ethics training every couple of years, these are four pillars that I believe summarize that whole two hour ethics training that we do. First one, when you're making a decision, am I acting in the best interest of the public? If that is one of the four pillars that drives your decision making along with all the best information provided by this incredible city staff that work around us here in those staff reports, that is a great pillar that will keep you safe. You don't have to be experts in the law and know everything about government code section ten ninety or penal code section sixty eight on bribery and other such things. You don't have to know all that. Is this in the best interest of the public, right? And is this well prepared, compliant with the Brown Act so that we can act upon it? And then we move forward. A second pillar that should help us, anything that looks like self-interested dealing, we need to avoid. Anything that looks like it's gonna benefit us, we need to avoid. This is all about maintaining, building, at the very least not eroding that public trust. And there are in those trainings and with our um, well-heeled, great experience law firm that we have as a city attorney's office, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And we need to really address things, vet things and filter things through our city's, city attorney's office. If there's even a question of self-interested conduct, self-interested dealing, so that we make sure that we are clearing there and that's our clearinghouse. They are the ones who can help us. If we come to them after the fact, that can be problematic. So anything by way of self-interested dealing, we should avoid, right? That's the second great pillar. Third out of the four, don't abuse a position or authority. And sometimes it doesn't feel like we're abusing position or authority and the rest of the public perceives it as abusing position or authority. Little things, right? Like let's pick an employee, not a governance team member who shows up at a um, you know, a formal grand opening event at a local Java hut somewhere. And uh, you know, the person who's the managers from the community, they've known each other all their lives. And the person says to our, our um, building code compliance officer, right? And whatnot, um, hey, well, it looks like you're here, I should have expected it. You always wanna free anything, like a free cup of coffee, just joking, busting chops kind of thing. And the employee doesn't take it that way. Well, you're just lucky I have a sense of humor, so I don't notice all the violations you have in this corridor with these boxes blocking the fire exits. May not seem like much, but it could be the appearance of abusing position or authority to other folks, right? Do that in. We have to be careful with the things we say, right? Even as private citizens, right? Even as um, non-elected individuals with first amendment rights. We always have to be careful and the, and the public is counting on you for that. So act in the best interest of the public, avoid self-interested dealing, don't abuse your authority or even have that uh, vision of it. And then avoid even the appearance of impropriety. The good news for you, you know all this. You have it already. I've gone through these thirty four pages of our policies and procedures for the council. Again, amended last September and formally, I think, with um, our city clerk's signature sometime in November of last year. I share with you, the appearance of impropriety can help you in so many ways. Years ago, when I was still in the trenches as a trial lawyer, um, myself and another um, partner at the firm, I was an associate at the time, were um, responsible for taking anything that was born to trial to go to trial. Not everybody wants to and most cases don't. You know, upwards of ninety eight percent, somewhere in there, that number fluctuates. Don't go to trial, they settle, get dismissed, whatever. Well, we had to take them when they did and we enjoyed it. So uh, one was handed off to me where I had to represent a law firm that was being sued for malpractice. It was an insurance claim, wasn't my area of expertise, but I could handle that. And I went there and now one of the partners at the firm, and by the way, they were just being sued because they were trying to collect eight hundred thousand that a client owed them after a verdict not in their favor. And so they didn't wanna pay it and they thought they could get leverage by um, by suing for malpractice, a common thing that happens. So there was no actual evidence of malpractice by the firm that was supportable. And in the middle of this binding arbitration pursuant to their fee agreement, um, they settled. And uh, for almost the full price that the law firm was trying to collect. One of the partners had now become the presiding judge at the superior court for their county. And we went to lunch, we're five counties away from where they were, um, the presiding judge. And as I bought dinner in this uh, icon downtown San Jose called Original Joe's, I was getting ready to pay the bill and she pulls out her purse and starts to give me some money. I said, no, 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 I'll call her Lisa. No Lisa, it's okay, I'm, I'm gonna cover it, you know, that's my responsibility. She says, no, no, I have to pay for my own. And I said, we are five counties away, no one's gonna know I bought your lasagna and some cheesecake. And, and I felt I was a pretty moral guy saying all those things. She leaned forward, you know where this is going, right? She leaned forward and she said, Jerry, I'll know. And boy, I felt that chastisement, right? Professional chastisement right there. What's that measure of character we hear so often? If you have the chance to get away with somebody, no one's ever gonna find out, but you do the right thing anyway, but you comply anyway, that's the measure of real character. This was, I was sitting in front of her, the measure of real character. And she taught me a lesson that day in nineteen ninety eight, ninety nine, that all these years later, I still hold dear to the heart because of uh, it cut me to the core is what it did. So even avoid the appearance of impropriety goes beyond that, you know? And, and we'll talk about that a, a little bit more at some points, given our, our time. But those are it. If you're focused on these four pillars, driving what you do in your formal capacity in those chairs, great things will happen as well as the civility and the professionalism with which you conduct yourselves individually and collectively, right? So it all goes down to this. Are you truly committed to being a leader? Business schools across this great nation, dare I say, across the globe, have tried in vain with the research that they're doing still today to create a universally accepted definition of what a leader is. And to date, one has not been created that's academically supported. You know, we have a military version of leadership that gets employed. It's often top down, it's often autocratic and authoritative. But even that requires more soft power than it used to, given today's military, right? There's no one way that works best. There's democratic leadership, servant leadership, list goes on of the types of leadership, affiliative leadership, um, et cetera. And there is no single best way that we can count on. So we're not asking any one of the five of you to align your individual paradigm with one way to lead because that would be a mistake. The people didn't vote for that. What they voted for were whatever your leadership style is, we want you to be courteous, professional and civil. We want you to get things done, right? We want you to get it done. And that will be their measure of success for so many in positions of authority. Peter Drucker uses this definition, right? The only definition of a leader is someone who has followers. And it's pretty simple, but it's real. And by this definition, all of you, all of you are defined as leaders, wanna be clear about that. You have people who follow you. I don't know if they follow you on Facebook, social media or anything else, but you're here because you have followers, people who like your version of what we want to do and will follow you because of it. Different experiences you bring to the table. I like Mother Teresa's an awful lot. Your true character is most accurately measured by how you treat those who can do nothing for you. I love that. I love that, right? How do you treat people who can do nothing for you? Well, I have, I've ventured to guess that we could probably fill this room with people who could give us examples of your goodness and the things you do for them, even though you may not gain anything from them, right? Some would say a vote, but there's other places to get those votes. Can you do things for a neighbor, an elderly neighbor? I have this dream that I'm not gonna travel as much one day as I do now, every Monday and every Friday, I'm on an airplane, and then work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And that dream will include then, me being able to take a Thursday night or a Friday night at three of my local senior homes, skilled nursing facilities, and other places to take my very musical family and entertain them, even though they can have nothing that they can give us or do for us, but I do feel like just their warmth and their reaction is giving me something. I believe in this very much. And then Sam Walton, leaders must always put their people before themselves. If you do that, your business will take care of itself. And in your case, your people are the people. The people, right, you're about their business. And if you put them first, I believe this one makes sense for us as a governance team in a public entity. And so that's why I appreciate this one, and why it makes sense to use a retail, you know, giant not everybody loves, because it makes so much sense in the context of public service, truly. Now, while there is no definition, universal definition of what a leader is, there is a universal definition of leadership. There is. Now, I can't say, because I haven't worked on every continent, I've worked in the Western Hemisphere, right? I've worked in Mexico and Central America, done a little bit of consulting in South America, mostly remote stuff that we do in that regard. And I will tell you that this definition crosses international boundaries, but I can't speak for the continent of Africa or Asia, South Asia, et cetera. But you tell me if it resonates with you. The ability to provide a common or shared objective and then motivating a group to achieve that objective. That is absolutely a universal definition of leadership in the worlds that I travel in. The ability to provide a common or shared objective, then motivating a group to achieve that objective. And you can do it in any context, and you don't need a title to engage in leadership. A kid walking down the street here could see something like a huge branch fall off because of a windstorm, see a couple of grown-ups, a couple of adults, and a couple of kids, and say, hey, sir, can you stop that traffic from coming? Then me and these other kids will take that branch and move it so that this won't be a hindrance to the rest of these people. That's leadership. The ability to provide a common or shared objective, then motivating a group to achieve that objective. That is what the people expect of you as a governance team, to provide this common or shared objective. So if someone came up to you today and said, Councilmember Gama, this is rhetorical, don't answer. What are our objectives in the city? What are we trying to accomplish in the next eighteen months? Councilmember Hernandez, what are our three-year goals, our five-year goals? What foundation are we laying for Port Huaynimi twenty years from now, in twenty forty-three? Can we answer those questions? What are the common or shared objectives? You may be able to, you may not, I don't know, I don't have enough information to that effect. I do know that as part of these trainings that were, you know, brought to you by the Joint Powers Authority you belong to, California JPia, terrific pool, by the way, I have no connection to them beyond being a service provider for them, but I will tell you, for many years, I owned a firm that ran fourteen JPAs. We were not public entity employees, we were private staff contracted to run these fourteen JPAs all over the state of California. And I compare our teams, which were great, to the team at CJPia, and equally great. They have a great, great team there and a great resource to all of you, to that end. So, are we doing this? Where are we? One of the sessions, to get back to Cal JPia, is they want to support here, is to provide, and it's not something that we'll do, but somebody else, a strategic planning facilitator for you, so that you can update, right, even if you have goals. Make sure we get those up to date and do that. I don't know how long it's been, I don't know if any of these, anyone on this council has been involved in a strategic planning session, or if this team as a whole has. So that'll be something that's important, to be able to answer these questions. And so, this city needs your collective leadership. We love you individually, we need you collectively more than ever. And so let's delve right into that then, this council manager form of government relying on first your role, right? What is your role when we look at this? That's what this next slide is all about. Four parts, easy to remember, you could probably share them with me, but let's start with the first one. You set the direction, you provide the vision for this great city. What are we about? If we are here to aid in the people's business, what do we believe needs to happen over the short term, the midterm, and the long term to support the people's business? It may be involved, please, Councilmember again.
Can I request that a light up here be turned on? Or maybe a little more light?
Is that good, or even more?
Yeah.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for that request. We want you all to be comfortable and be able to see everything. I just requested the darker, cuz I look better in soft lighting, so. So, the vision, right? For some of you, that vision may be that we want facilities in the jurisdiction of the city of Port Huaynimi to be available to its residents. Parks, beaches, whatever that is, courts, common areas for picnics and gatherings. That may be a vision for what you have, and collectively, you need to decide where that is on the priority versus infrastructure things. Like, what does, what do our water pipes look like? That are our primary providers of our clean drinking water, right? Are we gonna start to sever some infrastructure that we know some of our larger cities to the south have impacted them over the years, this last ten years in particular? And created tremendous deficits that may or may not have been planned for, depending on who you ask, and all were a part of deferred maintenance, right? Because we thought we had time when these clay, ceramic, and other such material water pipes were put in in nineteen oh eight, or whenever that was. So, what are those goals? That'll give us the opportunity to say, okay, our vision is a safe, well-healed infrastructure for the city, and then we break it down to other goals. And then the city manager takes those goals, and we have a new city manager starting, it's a great time to have this dialogue, takes those goals and ensures they understand them, and you ensure they understand them. And then they delegate them to the different directors in the city, they get delegated down to managers. Without your vision, the goals that our departments are setting are just to the best of their ability to deal with the day-to-day operational things of the city of Port Huaynimi. And they're not perhaps, and I don't know them, so this isn't in any way a judgment of them, but in cities like this where there's no overarching vision, they create goals, these directors, that they think are the best for the department, for the city, et cetera. And they may or may not be connected to one another. We need this to be a cohesive collective, trying to move the collective needle for this city to achieve outcomes that you envision, right? And it can only be done once we have that vision in place. So, number one, set direction for the city. Number two, you adopt the policies and procedures that are needed to successfully operate this city on a regular basis, right? What are the policies and procedures that set behavioral expectations? That creates structure, because structure drives behavior. Where there's no structure, some employees will not thrive, and others might, depending on their own personal character, et cetera. But structure drives behavior, and we set that structure through a number of policies that we create. So, vision, policies, and procedures, and then you are advocates to the world, right? To this world that we call Port Huaynimi. And you share those with the people you encounter in your various roles and capacities at both official and unofficial engagements that you're out there attending, representing the city. You share with people, yeah, here's what we're doing, here's what we're focused on. When you go to regional things, and you meet with other council members from other cities in the county or beyond, right? You talk and you listen to them, and what will you impart? The things that you're all about, and what we're trying to achieve here in the city, and how, and why, et cetera. So you're the great champions. Every goal needs champions, and you are the great champions of those goals to folks that will listen. And those folks are typically members of the community and other stakeholders. Typically not the employees themselves, but everybody else, yes. Those goals should be shared through their leadership chain, from city manager to director to manager supervisor, then the employees themselves. And lastly, and this is your role, right, on this leadership that we need, you hire a city manager. That is one of your primary objectives, those four pillar things that you need to do, attract and retain, and performance manage a city manager. Well, here we are, right? You've just done that, and we do that periodically. And so, we've hired a city manager who we believe possesses, through our vetting process, we believe possesses the skills, abilities, experience, and know-how. They are a subject matter expert in the governance of local governments, municipalities in particular. And now that you have them, your job is to ensure that they are doing the things that they said they were gonna do and that you want them to do. Because that's the one employee you do get to supervise and manage, is the city manager. Any questions about those four areas, a vision, policies, communication, right? Being the champions, or the hiring of a city manager?
I have a question.
Please.
I think the choice of wording here is interesting, that you use the word shepherd. That the city manager should shepherd the council's vision. Can you elaborate on what you mean by shepherd?
Yeah, you know, it is a form of leadership, it may be evidence of one that I like. You can only be a shepherd leader if you have competent people around you, right? And what does a shepherd do? A shepherd sometime walks behind, and when, think of a sheep shepherd, right? And one of the sheeps starts to wander off, you know, and wander off, they get them back in, they jump in and bring them back into the fold, if you will, that kind of thing. Some shepherds are in front. In March, this is still true. In March, I had an occasion to visit the Middle East, and I was in Israel and in Turkey. And while I was there, we went with this individual who we'd hired and took us out, cuz I wanted to see this shepherd leadership at work. And sure enough, they had corralled, couldn't be less than five hundred sheep into the safeguard. Natural demographics around, and then a gate made out of wood, like an old west kind of gate, you know what I mean, just raw fencing. And that's for protection, and the shepherds aligned themselves around the outside at night. Some, they had one or two dogs, but mostly it was human work. And in the morning, they open the gate, and one shepherd calls, and his sheep know his voice, and they follow him. And then the next shepherd, and the next, and it's amazing how that unfolds. Some shepherds I noticed are out front, some are out and back, and they're doing this, right? Bringing them back into the safety of the flock. And so for me, a city manager, if he or she is fortunate enough to have a capable workforce working, for example, in the city of Port Huaynimi, all he or she has to do is give that vision, taken from you, to those directors, and ensure that those directors are communicating and managing the outcomes of their responsibility to achieve the vision that you have set. And they shepherd that by pretty much leaving them alone until they need to go there and speak and do or take action. And if you have a director who, for example, is more of a placeholder than a leader, they're in their final years of those purrs handcuffs, and they're not really doing much, let's just say, an example. Of course, I'm thinking of entirely other city than this one. And then the city manager has to get in and say, hey, this is not okay, you need to do more. These are the things that you were lacking with specifics, right? And I need to see this from you, let's check in in thirty days and see where you're at with this. To me, that is the shepherding part. When the performance isn't happening, they are guiding that performance, they are leading that performance, and they're holding it accountable. And the accountability can be absolutely positive, as positive as it can be, but it has to have consequences. Has to have consequences in order for it to be effective, because structure drives behavior. System thinking, that's how it works, right? So that's what I mean by shepherding that. They need to be constantly vigilant, because they have to report back to you, right? And if there's elements to it, and our mayor has a question, council member Gama has a question, why haven't we achieved this, or why haven't we achieved that? And the answers need to be readily available. Lack of resources, oh, well, we had the tornado that came through, and it set us back, you know, three months. There have to be answers to those questions. And if they're not, then, you know, you have to ask, why don't we have answers? Does our leader not have their finger on the pulse of what's happening, right? And then we can also ask, as we police each other, well, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your question, but as I'm listening to the city manager, it seems like that information would not be available to anybody, so I'm not sure how reasonable the request is. And you police each other on the idea of whether or not we're making unreasonable demands on our leaders. Right, so that's an important part of this, of what you do. So that was my long answer.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hernandez, to that question. Any other comments or questions? There don't wanna be questions, they can be comments. Are you comfortable with this? Do you disagree with any of it? Is it consistent with what you learned when you went to the League of California Cities, right, and their training?
It's better, it's better than what we got at the league, I think.
Good, 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 all right, see, nothing, let's continue to press on. And I will take a break, by the way, right at the one-hour mark. What is, what was our agenda on, how much time we allotted for this meeting? Two hours, right? All right, so I'll take a break right at the one hour, right? So right at four o'clock, I will take a break. So, when you give that direction, please remember, stay in your lane, right, in a positive way. Councilmember Gama, did you have a different number? Was it four thirty, or?
No, that's for the next meeting.
So we're going to five or six thirty?
Am I going till five, right?
Yeah, we'll go till five.
Okay.
For the next meeting.
Very good. Yeah, that's nice, I can see you all even better now. So, since we know those are our roles, and truly, you know, when we elected you, right? We, the people, that's our expectation of you. Some people may have other expectations of you. They may say, right, as they come to you, hey, I voted for you, I campaigned for you. My whole neighborhood got you a majority of the vote, as you know, because of what we did. So, what are you gonna do about this tree, right? And they may come to you with those questions, and I think those are fair requests as far as in their mind goes or their collective paradigm. But if it doesn't fit within what we just described of setting a vision, right, setting, adopting policies and procedures, being champions and communicating what these things are, and then working through our city manager who we hired, hopefully will retain and will be great for us, then we don't do it, we say, hey, I appreciate what you're saying, I can see why that would be a concern to you. I will talk to our city manager and let him know about this concern, and hopefully that will go through the process and they'll let you know what can or can't be done. That's it, that's what we do, right, to stay in our lane, if you will. Why? Because there's immunities that we're talking about here, when you stay in your lane, there are protections. And if you want great detail on those, just talk to your city attorney's office and have them talk to you about those things further. What we'll cover is just a little bit here on those immunities in a little bit as well. But those four areas have to be our driving force as we now pivot over to what our council manager role looks like in what we do. So relying on the great municipal code of Port Huaynimi, not gonna spend a lot of time, I'm just gonna summarize some of these and not read them, but a couple I will read. You created the office of city manager, if not you, then your predecessors, with this municipal code that we have. And one of the things that I read that I liked, I don't see it in everyone, there's a lot of, you know, there's a model sort of municipal code out in the world that a lot of people rely on in California, and I will tell you that not all of them say, appointed by the council solely on the basis of merit. I like that, I like that statement, because I've always felt, I just wanna be the master of my own destiny. And I don't want any artificial obstacles there, and I don't want any nepotism or favoritism getting in the way either. And so, solely on the basis of merit, I like that very much. This one tells us that the city manager is the leader of the administration of the day-to-day operation of the city. As it says on the last, second to last line, efficient administration of all, of city affairs under his control, right? And here's how he does it, or she does it, depending on who our city manager is. The top one's just telling us, they prepare a budget, and they monitor the budget, and they report to you on the budget. You can expect that of your city manager based on your code. They keep you fully apprised to the financial conditions of the city, big part of it. Your municipal code that you develop says, yeah, we're gonna do that. And by the way, we want you to prepare periodic financial reports for us, and that office does that, the office of city manager. On this one, it's talking to us a lot about, there are procedures and policies at times that need to be developed in order to administer the business of the city. No better example of that than twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two with our worldwide pandemic. So many of my client cities had to develop hybrid work policies, right? Or full remote work policies. And some of them worked so well, one of my public agencies still has a remote policy where people only come to the organization where people only come to the organization once, maybe twice a week tops. And they're still all working remotely because they've been so productive now. They're not a city, it would be different if you're a city. How do you do public works remotely, right? How do you do public safety remotely? They're a regional agency that serves all nine counties of the Bay Area. And so they're able to do it and they're doing a great job with it. So the manager does it. Our city manager who we hire, retain, formulates policies and rules and regulations, et cetera. They're gonna attend council meetings, right? They attend council meetings. When I said the earlier one about prepare administrative rules and regulations necessary or expedient, that doesn't mean they can create legislation or policies or procedures, right? That's your job. That was clearly the second pillar for you. And they do that. But exigent circumstances, they have authority to do certain things. And they're your PR person. You want them to be good at that because they're a big part of that. They ensure that all the paperwork that needs to be done for people to conduct business in the city within the rules you created for the city are accomplished. And if not, there have to be consequences, right? And if changes need to be made because of exigent circumstances, you expect them to be competent and capable to do that. And then they appoint people, hopefully qualified, capable, based on their merit kind of people to do the people's business here in the city. They dismiss, suspend, remove, all those things on there. Letter H, subpart H, employees in the city within the bounds of the law, right? Whatever law applies. And they sometimes employ temporary, part-time people as needed. Going through a couple of these, they, bottom one, they devote his or her entire time to the duties of his or her office and to the interests of the city. Boy, we need that in a city manager. I've never met a city manager who could have one foot on the dock and one foot on the boat and be really successful at it. You know, they're gonna get wet if they try to do that. So I think that's an important one. I'm glad you have it in your municipal code describing the duties of that city manager. Perform other duties as you require of them and within their power. Procure things that need to be procured within the policies that you've adopted and created, consistent with those things. And always keep it in mind, being fiscally sound and having that budget in mind. Recommend, here's where it comes back to you, recommend ordinances and resolutions to the council for adoption, one of your primary roles, right? That the city manager deems necessary or expedient. Does that mean you have to adopt those things? Does the city manager come to you and say, hey, you need to adopt this? They might, but I don't know how effective they would be and how long they would last if they were dictating to you. I do know city managers that wield a great deal of power and have been around their cities a long time. And because of their track record of excellence, they are deferred to quite a bit in that city. But there's no guarantee because you are the shepherds, the check and balance of the city's business here when it comes to ensuring, is this in the best interest of the city, right? Is this in the best interest of the people? That's your role. And so you have to maintain that one, take that one very seriously, right? We want to make sure our city manager also knows that if there's something going on here that's somehow impeding our ability to effectively discharge the work of the city, they're on top of it and they report back to us. And we say, hey, what's this holdup? How come we haven't had any permit signed in the last three months? What is the problem, whatever it is, right? We expect them to be able to answer those questions for us with facts and data and do those things. So there's a lot we expect of these city managers. Exercise general supervision over all of our structures and ensure they're properly maintained, right? And a good facilities crew, et cetera. Capital improvement projects. We expect them to be on top of those as we in charge them. If one of our pillars, one of our visions, the pillar of creating a vision is, hey, we want to get on in twenty-three, twenty-four. We want to be right on top of the deferred maintenance of our city hall, right? Then you expect him to formulate a great deal of those capital improvement projects along with building, planning, community development, whoever that is, and to shepherd those things through and report back to you on a consistent basis, those types of things. Cooperate with community organizations. We hope they're never at odds with any stakeholders in Port Juanaemi. This is always one that I wonder how people feel when I bring that one up. People have it written in different ways under your subpart S. It says, receive and open all mail addressed to the council and give immediate attention thereto so that all administrative business referred to in said communications, not necessarily requiring council manic, like that word, action may be disposed of between council meetings. So just a quick question, is it our city clerk that opens that mail, right? And does what's necessary for it in filtering that? Still, right? We have to have that responsibility to be maintained and the city manager ensuring that our wonderful city clerk is discharging that duty and responsibility. So this one's a little bit bigger, I put it on one slide. Neither the council nor any member thereof shall give orders to any subordinate of the city manager. That means anybody below the city manager, whether it's director, manager, non-supervisory employee, patrol officer, sergeant, you name it. The city manager shall take instructions from the council only when sitting in a duly-held meeting of the council. That's your municipal code, right? How are we doing? This is rhetorical. You can comment if you want, but it's rhetorical. Going back to focusing on ourselves, am I part of the problem or part of the solution? City manager shall take instructions from the council only when sitting in a duly-held meeting of the council. Do we expect our city manager, when we speak to them, to take what we say as direction? Right? There's the question. And the thing I'd like to point out to you is, as a member of this governance team, what you may think is regular conversation when you pop into the city manager's office may feel like more than that to the person on the receiving end. You may just say, hey, I noticed that they really cut back those crepe myrtle trees more than normal. They look like stumps, not like cut-back crepe myrtles over on Maple Avenue, you know? And it's just shocking to see. I wonder if they've made a mistake. You're just making an observation. How might that be heard by a city manager? I'm gonna go talk to Public Works, my director, and see what that's about. And so I go, see, it created action. City manager has a lot of action they need to deal with and a lot on their plate. And the city manager shall take instructions from the council only when sitting in a duly-held meeting of the council. Because the governance team gives the city manager instruction, action, et cetera. Not one individual council member. That is a tough line for most of my, you know, governance team city councils to manage. That's a tough line for many on those teams to manage. For context, we have hundreds of public entity clients, right? We do, and that's a tough line to manage. Do you have any questions, concerns, clarification, or anything else that you want on this particular subject?
But I, in complete agreement, I did just come back from a JPIA training.
Okay.
And so this is a lot more in-depth, but point on what I came back with. And so I think, I think for us, what is in my mind right now is as a team, which we are, governance team, that I feel that I want to believe that my colleagues are open to holding each of us accountable when we see things that are outside of our own governance documents specifically. But just the responsibility of the council. So I appreciate you making this one comment because even sometimes things come up and I say like, oh, I'm part of the team. I didn't even know about that. Or how are we even talking about this right now? Or someone else will say something and I'll say, really? And I'm like, am I supposed to know that too? Or, you know? So I think that we have a lot of work to do as it relates to being a governance team and that at some point, we really have to get into just really holding each other responsible and not being afraid to say things that might make people uncomfortable. I'm in the same mind as you are. I think that you could say pretty much anything you wanna say and you can be professional about it. And so I would really like to get there, but I would really like to get to the point to where if I'm seeing something that I feel safe, that I can call it out and that the other council members will do the same. I think because if we don't get there, then we'll continue to have the same issues that we have if we don't get to the point to where we can, we can, we can. And when I say call each other out, I don't mean to be aggressive. I just mean to speak up and say, oh, I thought that was outside of our roles and responsibilities. Or, oh, I thought that was the city manager's role.
Absolutely.
Things like that, yeah.
And it would look like this, just for a moment, I'm gonna elevate myself to a council member, right? Say, oh, Councilmember McQueen Lejeune, did I say her last? Okay. I appreciate what you're saying there, I really do. I don't know if you noticed, but the way you framed it or when that next meeting could happen, it would exclude me. I don't think you intended that, right? And so I couldn't help but feel left out of that or like my voice maybe didn't matter as much, but can we pick a different time, right? As opposed to me doing it this way? That was a very obvious microaggression, Martha, and, right? And so there are ways to say things that are professional, that are courteous and are civil. And we want that so bad, we, the people. As a non-elected person, not from Port Juanaemi, but I'm telling you, we want that. We do. You don't need to be a jerk to get a point across or to look tough. You just don't. You don't need to be aggressive or the aggressor to do that, to look strong, tough, capable, like you really care about this. You can do it by virtue of your regular attendance, your commitment to your preparation in advance of our council meetings, your commitment to understanding the issues and not asking questions that are apparent and obvious that you haven't looked at the staff report, right? Et cetera. That's how we look, like we are truly committed to our role as public servants and part of this great governance team of Port Juanaemi. This is the most time I've ever spent in the city of Port Juanaemi. My meetings with you being the first and now, and then continuing to come back and work with you and having the pleasure and privilege of doing so. And as I drive around your city, because, I don't know, I kinda consider myself sort of a casual subject matter expert as I drive around all my cities that I work with, there are a lot of things to like about this city. And there are a lot of things, you know, that I see and I said, oh, that's what council member so-and-so was talking about. Oh, that's what the mayor mentioned, right? This is in my one-on-one dialogues with you. And I see them, you know, and I think this city has so much potential. You all see it, right? It's already great as it is. I hate the idea of me suggesting like it's a meeting of significant other. Hey, I really like you, you've got a lot of potential. I can turn you into something. That's not what I mean, right? That's not what I mean. What I mean is, there's no reason this governance team can't be the best governance team in the history of the city of Port Juanaemi if we're willing to look inward and say to ourselves, how can I do this? And be a part of this in a way that is consistent with the trust the public has provided me with and entrusted me with to that end. So this is a big one, right? Watch what you say, you know? And I'm not speaking to any one of you, I'm speaking to all five of you. Watch what you say when you are meeting with our city manager. If you happen because of our city manager's absence or different things going on, our assistant city manager or whomever that would be, right? Watch what you say, how you say it, to whom you're saying it, who's present when it's being said. Because it may not sound like an action item to you, but it's being heard as one, more often than not. Yes, Councilwoman.
So, Mr. Preciado, can you take the example that you gave us about the city council member going into the city manager's office and complaining or just noting problems with a tree? What should have happened? What would ideally, how should have that gone? Would the city manager have to say, you know, you need to bring this up at council? And then does the council member come to council and bring it up and then go through an approval process? Ideally, what would be the optimal way of addressing one's concern?
That's a good question and I'll rely on the city attorney to get me back on track and shepherd me and if I run afoul of this one. But there is an obligation in these. I meant what I said when I said I did read them, read them a couple of times now. That says, you know, when your mail comes, our city manager slash or city clerk's gonna review that and provide you with any information that's needed, otherwise process it the way they would. And you each have an obligation that if you get mail from a member of the public related to a matter of public concern, et cetera, that you're supposed to give that to our city clerk for processing as well. That's what it says in here, right? And because it's a matter of public record, it's a matter of, you know, is it discoverable as the PRA Public Records Act, right? That kind of thing. So Kevin, do you want to chime in on that?
Right, as we're talking about public records as well as records retention, I believe the city of San Jose case made very clear that even records received by council members on their personal cell phones or their personal email addresses, so long as they relate to items of city business, need to be preserved and/or turned over in the event of a Public Records Act request to which they are responsive. In addition, one of the things that's off-sided in our records retention schedules, but not very well talked about, is Government Code Section 34090, which essentially requires that any record document needs to be retained for a minimum period of two years. So that would theoretically include text messages, emails, things of that nature. And if a Public Records Act request does come in and those items are not preserved, there's some potential liability there.
Thank you. It's exactly what I was looking for. Councilmember Gama?
So I was the target of a nasty gram that was sent to four of my colleagues and not myself. So what you're saying is that that should be shared with me?
No, it should be shared and processed through our city clerk and then she would follow whatever process we follow in the context of correspondence like that.
So, but again, I wanna be clear. Somebody sends a letter and says Stephen Gama's the worst person for this assignment and sends it to everyone but me. Shouldn't I be made aware of that if it's gonna be discussed in a meeting?
Is that our policy in the city? That when you get a mail, mail like that referring to a council member who didn't receive it, is it our policy that then we make that council member aware? Because we follow whatever our policies say.
I haven't personally received such a notice or complaint or letter, but normally what I do do is when I get something, all council is made aware. It's like, well, it's provided to one, it's provided to all.
That is typically the answer, Councilmember Gama.
Well, but.
I think what he's referring to is it was only sent to council, it was not sent to anybody else.
And so going back to what our city attorney said, then council should have provided that to our records keeper, our city clerk, who then would have made it available to all who had not gotten it. That would be you, should have gone to you, yeah.
Right, and it should be across the board. I mean, if, and I think that's been a problem that we had previously is sharing of information.
Gotcha.
You know, like if I said, hey, a tree just fell over that I observed on a ten o'clock at night walk and I do the GoGov to make the city aware of it, I don't expect that to be shared with all the other council members. Is that correct?
What does the GoGov do? Is that part of our website?
It's a, yes, it's a way to report issues. Graffiti, like graffiti is a great example.
Residents and others.
I see it, I take a picture, I send it in and we move on.
Yeah.
But that's quite different than somebody.
Yeah, because that's a communication from you, not somebody else, to a council member like you or any of the others. And if you're sharing that communication, it's not clear that what one of you shares in your observations about the city needs to go to everybody else. That part's not clear to me.
And I think it's important here to highlight the implications of the Brown Act where a quorum may not discuss or deliberate or take action on any item of business within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Certainly, if an item of public significance gets sent to one member of the council, then each of the other members should be free to access it and it should be provided to everyone on the council equally. The problem then lies in there can't be deliberation. Not unless it's agendized for a duly-organized public meeting where the public has an opportunity to comment as well. And that's assuming it's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city.
So if a letter is sent to four council members on a targeted subject matter and the other council members not provided that information and then there's a discussion of it, that letter in a deliberation on the dais, you know, that's unfortunate, I think, I think. But again, it, that shouldn't happen. Is that what you're saying?
Well, not if it's of correspondence, the way we just described it. If it, you know, checks these boxes, then at some point, you should have been provided with that information. Matter of public interest from members of the public to the other council members. You know, that information needs to be shared. And we don't always remember that. That's why it's good to have meetings like these, to remember that when that letter comes, whether it's about, hey, we have this barking dog issue in my trailer. in my trailer park on the east side of town, you know, stuff like that, we turn it over, and then it gets disseminated as appropriate. So, hand her hand up first, and then we'll go to our mayor pro tem.
But, um, the letter he's talking about, I received it, I didn't know anybody else received it. I thought the person had sent it to me personally, and so I was like, oh, okay, and I didn't respond to it. And then not until we got on the dais that I realized, everybody had gotten it, except him. So it wasn't, I don't think it was, anyone, anyone knew that everybody else got it. I thought it was just sent to me personally, and then on the dais I, I realized it had been sent to everyone else, so.
Understood, yeah, understood.
So that, I just wanted to say that, uh, so Stephen understands this, it didn't go to everyone and everybody wasn't on the distribution list.
Madam Mayor, pro tem.
This also includes text messages? So if we get a text message about something, a community member complaining about something, then how are we supposed to handle that?
Uh, this is one of those unresolved issues of the city of San Jose case, and I, I've seen a number of cities take the position that text messages, and even certain cities have made the argument that emails are not documents within the meaning of the government code. In fact, they are transitory communications, more similar to a Post-it note. I am unaware of any legal authority that, that bolsters that, but certainly the government code cannot be read to require us to keep for a period of two years every Post-it note we scribble on. I, such, such a result would be absurd. Unfortunately, the best answer that I can give you is that the law is very, very slow to change and adapt to new technologies. My advice would be that text messages and things of that nature, if they don't need to be deleted for, I, I'm gonna go into electronically stored information discovery procedures, if they don't need to be deleted as a result of routine operations of systems, I would recommend retaining them because they might be discoverable in the future. And an adverse inference instruction in a jury proceeding or a charge that we've failed to comply with Government Code Section 34090 certainly exposes the city to liability. That being said, there may be an argument in the event we ever find ourselves there that these are in fact transitory, but I would err on the side of safety, given the unsettled nature of law.
I, I'm glad we're talking about this, cause clearly you're all interested, clearly you wanna be reminded, you wanna know where those boundaries are, et cetera, so it's a good thing. And I'm glad we have our city attorney here to assist us in, in some of that. Even though, did you hear all that legal jargon in there? Oh my gosh, right? As a recovering lawyer for the last twenty years, not gonna lie, it gives me a little bit of chills to see how impressive that is. But, but the reality is, um, a lot of this is just going to be, hey, you know what, when in doubt? Check, just check, right? Hey, is this something I need to turn over? If not, I'll just leave it as is, I won't delete it. Just leave it at is, and hopefully no adverse rulings in the future for evidentiary purposes, right? Okay, so, um, when, when it comes right down to it, be mindful, oh, good time to stop. Uh, we've been sitting, you've been sitting there for an hour and eleven minutes at least, I think we started a little early. Take a quick break, right? Come back in, uh, what, about five, five minutes enough? Please do. A couple of slides, but this whole slide deck, I'll certainly make available, well, I think our city clerk has a slide deck right on your laptop there now.
Yes.
Can be made available to any of you that wants a slide deck. Um, there are immunities, because we want to encourage, um, citizens to engage and not have sort of any chilling impact or concern for liability, we created governmental immunities that provide that, provided you maintain your role within that governance team that you're on, they will continue to work in your favor. And specifically, for example, as Government Code Section 820.9, members of city councils, mayors, members of boards of supervisors, members of school boards, members of governing boards of other local public entities, members of locally appointed boards, your commissions, et cetera, um, locally appointed or elected advisory boards, bodies are, are not vicariously liable for injuries caused by the act or omission of the public entity or advisory board. That is a nice thing to have, right? Anything like that would be marvelous in anyone's life, right, that exists out in the world. So we want to encourage you to participate. So, if something were to happen, and again, I rely on our city attorney to correct any misinterpretation I gave you, but if you pass an ordinance or you pass, you know, measure, whatever thing you would be doing, legislating as an official member of this governance team, if somehow that created, you know, a, a situation where somebody in some form was injured or presented a claim to the city, you cannot be held individually liable, provided you are within the bounds of this particular immunity. Does that sound generally right? I'm getting a shaky nod, but there it is, okay? You had your hand up, Mr.?
Well, you, you answered my question.
Okay, okay. So, um, but I do have to give you this caveat on this next slide, which is, nothing in this section exonerates an official from liability for injury caused by that individual's own wrongful conduct, right? So it's not like blanket immunity, right? Nothing in this section affects the immunity of any other public official. So if, on an individual basis, you accessed information that you are not privy to, like, you know, in the great state of California, we have an express right of privacy. I believe it's under Article 1 of our constitution, whereas, you know, in the United States Constitution, it's implied multiple places, but the right of privacy is implied. That's sacred here, right? And, for example, medical records, we, we don't, don't even put them when we, when we receive them, uh, for a variety of reasons. We don't, when we have in our possession, put them in the regular, um, day-to-day personnel file of the individual. We put them in a separate place for greater security, greater privacy protection. If one of you happen to access electronic records of an individual, learn about information you otherwise should not be able to access or have access to, and you engage in any sort of invasion of privacy, right? Or violate somebody's privacy rights, that is not protected under this immunity because it is an individual, uh, act of wrongful conduct by you outside the course and scope of your role. Yes, Councilmember Gama?
What if we were accidentally sent something? And as soon as you realize, hey, I shouldn't have this, what would be the best practice?
Yeah, I would definitely, you know, if you come into possession of any information, um, somehow wrongfully attached to something, and we get this in discovery all the time, our responsibility ethically is to, whoop, only review it enough to figure out, hey, well, I shouldn't be seeing that. Their legal litigation strategy, take that, send it back to them, et cetera. You, um, either, um, let somebody know, let HR know, hey, I was given this information in my council packet, right? It was attached to it, it doesn't look like I should have this, you're right. They may say destroy that, uh, delete it, shred it, whatever, or they may say we need that back. Whatever that instruction is, if you comply with that upon learning, right? Not studying it, blowing it up into a visual, or anything like that. Upon learning of it, you get the instruction to do what you're supposed to do and you follow it, I believe you would be just fine, it's inadvertent, unintentional, not, um, you know, any sort of intent on your part to gain access to that or use it for any reason, or to violate anyone's rights. I think you'd be fine. And I don't hear our city attorney objecting to that, so.
Does that also include acts by individual council members? They, that go against council direction on their own that would be considered a violation of another individual's rights or rights to privacy?
It could, it, it, it includes any individual actions by a council member that violates somebody else's rights. Some kind of tort claim, some kind, whatever it is, right? Anything that we do as individuals, not as a collective, right? And I, I'd argue that it is maybe some things you all decided to do that was a wrongful act, that wouldn't qualify for the immunity either, it'd be a conspiracy at that point, right? And then it wouldn't be protected either. Anything to add to that, our city attorney would be pretty good there.
And the main thing that I would add is that California law and similar federal laws protect legislators when they're acting in a, in a specifically legislative field. So, the discussions that you have on the day, on the dais, uh, acting in the capacity as a representative council and, and passing ordinances and resolutions in that regard, that is all pretty protected under legislative immunity. Once you start acting as an agent of the city individually, without council authorization and things of that nature, that's where personal liability will attach.
Yeah, and, and even if you prevail, what a nightmare and a headache those things are. Not just from the PR standpoint, but just from your own peace of mind, laying your head on your pillow at night without this hanging over your head, yes.
I'm gonna suggest that perhaps there should be another caveat, and the caveat being that if you're opining or doing something relative to city business, right, I mean, what I do at my work, what I do on, um, my own personal time is one thing, but if it's related to city business and that's where you could, could you drag the city into liability situation? Like, I don't wanna give any specifics, but do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
If you're, if you're commenting on city business irresponsibly, doing an action to try and sway something one way or another, that, I think that's where.
Sounds very Machiavellian right there, right? Yeah, we're out there trying to influence behaviors, or change, or support, or whatever else.
Yeah, there's, there's potential for it, and I'm sure Mr. Preciado, that the plaintiff's bar will throw whatever they want against the wall and see if it sticks. And one of the ones that typically gets thrown out is a 42 U.S. Code 1983, which is a deprivation of civil rights under color of authority. So even if a council member or a city agent was not acting within the course and scope of his or her duties, the frequent argument, or under some qualified immunity, the frequent, the frequent argument is that some member of the public's rights were violated under color of authority, and therefore the city is liable, because, let's face it, the city has deeper pockets.
Small cities, doesn't matter, right? There's a JPA out there who will pay, and that's how they look at it, they know, they know the structure of things, right? Could, could pivot over to a JPAs, right? What if you're serving on other boards on behalf of the city, right? Can you give me some idea of what those would be? I know the one, CalJPIA. Um, uh, Councilmember Gama, you the representative on CalJPIA, that board? What other ones would it be? SCAG, very good. Who, who's representing us on that one? You, both of you? All right, any others that we have? Are those, uh? Okay. So, so you're out there, this is a, an extension, right, of your role on this governance team. And I think each of you would want from the other, if there were things relevant to matters pending before the city, that everybody came back and discharged their duty and responsibility to keep the governance team informed, right? If, if CalJPIA was changing their model for, you know, calculating the experience modification factor, the X mod, which determines your contributions every year to maintain your membership there for general liability, for EPL, for whatever coverage is out there, you'd wanna know that, you'd want the rest of the governance team to know that, so you can decide if it should go on an agenda, right? Um, and, and whatever process we're going through to make sure we get things on the agenda. I like seeing the word agendized, but I hate that it keeps getting autocorrected in every other document, you know? And so, that's, that's an important part of it, so that we have a discussion, hey, should we look elsewhere? Right, for this coverage, should we go back to the commercial market, it's soft, right, whatever that is? And so that's the key here, so that's important for you to keep each other informed, especially on things pertaining to the city and the best interest of the city. But just wanted to give you one slide on some stuff here, on the top one. When you're on those boards, you really do us a great service, uh, in conducting the people's business if you are as prepared, or just say well-prepared there, as you would be for any city council meeting. You know, as, as somebody, again, who ran those, those JPAs for so long with my colleagues, um, was a wonderful experience to have that much of the public interest in mind and, and protecting that almighty sacred tax dollar, right? And it was always disheartening to see a board member sit down at those JPA meetings as back when we had binders mostly, right? And break the seal on that binder for the first time as they sit down to conduct the business of that JPA. That's tough, right? Because there's so much information the staff went into with all that. So be prepared, and be prepared to analyze that data. So be prepared, and be prepared to analyze that data that needs to be analyzed, so you can make informed decisions for the collective. Any questions about that? Any disagreement there? Is it a burden? You just show up and that's okay? Second, exercise board member voting rights and cast votes based on the best available information and the best interest of the people. Still think of those four pillars, right, and what that means. Work through the city manager when seeking any information from that group, whether it's a pollution board, an air quality board, a county board of, you know, that we're assigned to, et cetera. When there's things that are needed, I know you're the board member, but still, your job, right, overall as a council member, set a vision, policies and procedures, communicate and champion, hire a city manager and work through them. Your board member role there has limitations, right? Participate in reading the material. If you want things from that board, information, some statistics that were cited, et cetera, because it somehow relates to what we're doing here, I wonder what it is we're doing here that needs that? Is that your council member governance team role stuff? Or is it something related to a staff report that's relevant to something that's on the agenda? If so, that needs to go through the city manager. That goes to the city manager, and the city manager will request that information from that board, whatever those things are. Otherwise, you're getting into the weeds, and you're starting to look like you're in the, a place where you shouldn't be. Any questions about that? That one isn't always clear to us as we see that going on. And if you work through the city manager, it's the safest thing. And as you discuss it with them, you know, it should be done in a way that, again, isn't creating individual action in a conversation that isn't by a city and governance team. So we may want to consider how we bring that up, where we bring that up, and if you're not sure, ask your city attorney. Ask your city attorney. What would be the best way, if I believe I need this information from this JPA that manages our X, Y, and Z, you know, and Councilmember Hernandez is on that board, and I think they could provide us with this data, should I just ask the city manager to get that, Kevin? Or should I, you know, figure that one out through the proper channel so that we don't start engaging in business that we shouldn't be engaged in? That's a long one, I know, I apologize.
A lot of these boards that we're on, you know, do their full purpose in conducting business that would be left to staff.
Yeah.
But it's full of elected officials to do so. Hard to figure out when you're being appropriate as to how you're voting on something or what information you get.
I could not have said it better. It is very untidy. There's nothing tidy about it, even though you know your role there and your role here. Where do I go with that? So my, this is, sorry, I'm on a bit of a soapbox here, 10 seconds, indulge me, please. My preference is that these JPAs, if their governing documents allow it, have employees of the city on the boards rather than elected people on the boards. And I've worked with both, and it just seems easier and much tidier when it is a assistant city manager, or a risk manager, or someone like that on that board, rather than an elected person. But it works. It's worked for years, and the governing documents of those JPAs dictate that.
So this, I've served on a JPA for a very long time, a public agency, and there were no elected officials on that board. And so I'm wondering why then does the California JPIA insist on having elected officials on the board? And I know it's been a long time practice, because I forget the lady's name, but she's been on the executive committee for 30 years.
Hmm, that's a long time.
That's a long time. She's from, I forget her name.
She's been an elected person for 30 years?
Yes, and she's been on the executive committee for probably 20 years.
There's something impressive and sick all at the same time there with that, you know?
But my experience had always been like, you know, the elected officials were, we would report to the board, excuse me, we would report, I'm a risk manager, so I would report, hey, we have this settlement that's above our authority level, and we would go to the board of directors for direction. But yeah, I just find it very odd that you're, I agree with you that all these elected officials on the, um, the board.
They're not alone, though. Councilmember Gamma, a lot of pools are like that. A lot, pool JPA, we use them interchangeably, right? And so I don't know why some are, but they, and they date way back, you're right. Their governance documents from the outset, and it'll be up to them to change them if it seems like it makes sense, but I think they're, like I said, they're one of the finest operating pools, sustainable pools, in California, maybe the country. CalJPIA, it's a strong pool. You know, the goal one day is that every pool will operate in a way that your contributions over time are offset by all the risk management and loss prevention, and those dollars that sit there, right, invested in life and other things that they have to be because they're public dollars, they get handled in such a way that the return on that money will cover your contributions for the next year. And the next year after that, right, and it keeps kind of self-fulfilling, and only disasters when catastrophic events happen that create liability that that's not sustainable. But there's a lot of good reasons out there for it, but I prefer the tidier way of non-elected people, but that doesn't mean it's the wrong way to have elected people. I just happen to have a preference there. So continuing on, so the last thing, already covered, keep the council apprised of your work on whatever boards you're on, right? That's important. We all wanna be included so that we're not caught off guard one day when we have to make a big decision that could have been, we could have been dealing with or processing for a year or two, and we're just hearing about it at the crisis moment. So here are some common pitfalls, right, that we'll just talk about in general, and I do want your input on these. So just, there's four of them that I selected based on conversations with all of you. Social media posts, for example, right? We do know in the law, for example, that social media posts can create liability for cities. Social media posts can trigger policy offenses by employees if they can reasonably, you know, be determined to be directed at coworkers, like a firefighter who has said, yeah, it's just my opinion, right, my constitutionally protected First Amendment right here to say, I don't think women should be in public safety, especially fire. If I need one of them to carry up my 250-pound body from a burning building, you know, how are they gonna do that and so forth and so on? Just exercising rights. Well, you know, courts can reasonably determine that those were directed at, they're female firefighters in the departments, right? And hold them accountable for that, and allow this, uphold the city's decision to reprimand them, to demote them, or whatever else happened in those cases. So likewise, city and council members, elected council members, whether you're appointed or elected, making statements on social media to piggyback onto something, I think Councilmember Gamma said, can they create liability for the city? And the answer is affirmative from our city attorney. They can. So you're, like the whole world, absolutely entitled to have social media presence. And a matter of fact, it seems odd, in this world so driven by social media, that an elected person wouldn't have a social media presence, except for the one or two who got hacked once or twice and was attributed to some horrible things and decided, I'm off completely now, right? And other things happen, like a national presence. Very well-known and very accomplished influentially Congresswoman from New York, Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, who had a Twitter account created, you know, that looks like her name, it has her picture on it, and it just says something like "the real AOC" or something like that. And she, and the person makes statements as if it's her, right? And Twitter says it's okay. I don't know if pre Elon Musk Twitter would have said it's okay, but this one does. And so there's all those challenges like that, but just be aware, no one's gonna look at that ever and say, oh, they must be saying that as a private citizen. That is not a positive assumption that is going to be made about you by nine out of 10 members of the public, business holders, stakeholders in the city, et cetera. They're going to assume you meant it in the worst way possible and for your own personal reasons. So be careful with any social media post. And then another part of that is you putting out into the world, right, positive things that you're engaged in, you know, whether it's a beach cleanup, some of us talked about, other events, bringing unity to the city and being inclusive events. You put those out there as invites, somebody shows up because the mayor posted he was going to be there, and there was gonna be some great music, and my favorite churros, and so I show up, and then I get injured, right, at it. And it looks to me like it was a city event. That's the only reason I came, was the mayor posted on it that he was going, and I wanted to be there too. And then I slip on some sand, I crack a hip, little bit of a brain injury, autoimmune encephalitis kicks in, I'm just thinking of a real case, and so forth, right? And so, it happens, right? So any questions about that? Because those boundaries are so untidy, to use that phrase again, about what's okay to put out there, please.
I'm not talking about public statements or social media, but I am wondering about, I'm walking through the park, and I see a risk, I'm always got my hat on, and I report it through GoGov, and it doesn't get corrected, and I think what I'm hearing you say is, okay, well then you better talk about it on the dais or get it agendaized or something. Or do I follow up again, hey, Mr. City Manager, remember pointing this out, still there, still a risk?
Is, I guess I would ask this question, Councilmember. In those four areas of vision, policies and procedures, championing, communicating, and hiring and retaining a city manager and executive leader to implement that vision, right? Does it include anywhere in those responsibilities, you identifying risks, trip and fall risks?
It does not, but I'm a resident, and I am accident-prone myself. And so, again, you know, we have the GoGov, which is available to all residents, and, but this particular resident is a city council person, and do I make my requests through the GoGov and then just wash my hands of it and say "la vie, done"?
I don't know. I guess I'm pushing back on the idea that you have to make any notice of it. I mean, it's hard to have a public discussion on this particular subject.
The whole point of the GoGov is for residents to report issues, graffiti, for example, graffiti.
Yes.
You see graffiti, public, it's on public property, boom. The city is aware, they got a GPS pinpoint, could go take care of it. So it's really good service.
Oh, it sounds terrific.
If I may, Councilmember Gamma, I think the distinction is, is that as a resident of the city, and like all residents of the city, a council member who came across a trip and fall injury, or a trip and fall liability issue, graffiti, or a fallen tree, any number of those things, can report to GoGov and can probably send an email to the city manager via that, via the city's website. The difference, and one of the things that was warned about earlier, is that taking any steps beyond that, you are not acting, or that council member would not be acting within the scope and capacity of a normal citizen. Suddenly, the city council member hat goes on. Suddenly, we're providing direction, or hinting at official action outside of a regularly agendaized meeting. It's not within the scope of where councils are supposed to operate at that level, it's more day-to-day operations, personnel management between city manager directors, it gets too far into the weeds. That being said, council's certainly capable of taking note of certain issues within the city, and there are annual, if not more frequent, evaluations of city executive performance. That might be an appropriate time to evaluate, we may have some issues with certain performance objectives, and we need to discuss that. But as far as lobbying or going beyond GoGov for a particular outcome, that's not a tool available to the average resident.
Just one other thing then, hypotheticals of risk management are abound. So, okay, so I do a GoGov, the significant tripping hazard, I did one GoGov, I did another GoGov, and now I'm just gonna wash my hands of it, and I'll deal with it when we come back from our month-long recess, and then somebody suffers a catastrophic injury. And there's a loss of, like, it's a brain injury, like a catastrophic injury, we know where that's gonna go.
Yeah.
Right? Now, would the JPA want me to come forward and say, hey, by the way, I reported this twice? Or would you want me, and I could tell you, me myself, I would make that information available to the JPIA, because I would think eventually it's gonna come out. But, do you understand what I'm saying? It's like...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. For me, it's lacking in some foundational premise, though. I think I said, our city attorney was pointing that out, that as a citizen, if you want to identify a tripping hazard that you discovered, significant or insignificant, but a tripping hazard, period, using GoGov or an email or anything of the kind, I think you can do that, as any citizen could, right? Any citizen can. But when you start to persist on those things, it really looks like you're giving an order, right, of things here. And we can go down the parade of horribles for any potential liability, right, that could happen here within the jurisdiction of the city of Port Juaniemi. Does that mean that all of you should have your risk manager hat on, looking for things, and emailing, and GoGov-ing them, and all the rest, right? That's not the typical scope of what the people elected you to do as far as the business goes. I can't think of a city, I can't think of a single city that isn't doing its level best to eliminate, right, within the resources they have, any potential liability created as a result of any risk management issue, whether it's tripping hazards, whether it's, you know, we all know that how this street was designed was pretty sketchy and so forth and so on. You know, there's only so much they can do, and so nowhere in my understanding, and I, it's gonna be a little bit self-aggrandizing maybe, but I've worked with a lot of councils, and I do consider myself a subject matter expert on the subject of the role of city councils. And I just have never seen where that role of being the default risk manager, because you're a subject matter expert, no question, for the port, I think, and that that is your responsibility to do that. If you do it as a citizen, great, but when you keep doing it, it looks like you're one member of a governance team giving direction to the city. Could something happen? Yes, right? That's true, just about any observations you make in those things, that tree looks sketchy, right, that sundial could be this, that, or the other. So I, I'm just rambling now, I just wanna say that I just don't see where that would fall into your responsibility. And so the question then of CalJPIA, they would not want any governance team leader putting their own public entity on notice of potential liability situations unnecessarily.
Okay, so you're gonna have to unpack that one.
I can't think...
Unnecessarily, I mean, but you do agree that any and all residents are encouraged to use GoGov?
Oh, absolutely. Sounds like a great tool.
Now, if I take what you just said to heart like 100%, it sounds like you're saying to me, look, you're a city council person, you probably shouldn't be putting the city on notice about risk.
No, what I'm really saying is, you should not be creating liability for the city.
I didn't create the tripping hazard, I'm just reporting it.
And there's the liability.
Reporting it?
It has to do with certain provisions relating to notice that are approvable element of premises liability for a public entity. The rules against public entity, or the rules relating to public entities are very different than, let's say, a private citizen's walkway approach to their house or something like that.
Or a grocery store.
Or a grocery store or something. And because those rules are different, and I can understand the concern, the general concern of the public, the problem lies in that, and not meaning to speak for the JPIA, but I can put this to the city attorney, for example, my responsibility is to the corporate entity. It is not to this council, it is not to any individual council member, it is not to the city manager, it is not to any member of this staff. My client is the city, and I am obligated to protect my client. If providing that notice harms my client's interest, I do not want it.
Now, do we want, last thing on that is, do we want to be made aware of those things through established processes that our city manager ushers in for us? Because you say in your vision creating through your strategic planning, we want a safe city, we want these gopher holes removed from our fields so the kids aren't busting an ankle, you know? Yeah, and then it comes back to performance management of the city manager, are we creating safe parks? Are our sidewalks safer this year than they were last year?
I'm having a hard time with what our city attorney just said, so let me try it this way. I come in to meet with you, the city manager, said, hey, you know, the gopher holes are crazy out there, just letting you, making you aware, here, here's a photograph, and then just leave it at that. Now, I just feel like I've been told that I've just created liability for the city because I made the city manager aware of gopher holes in a park where kids play.
That is the whole premise of premise liability, is due...
Is due to inform awareness, dangerous condition, should they have known, would they have known?
Right, I get that, I get all that. But I, sounds like I'm being told to ignore it and don't report it.
No, that's not what you're being told. What we're being told is let's use the channel of the governance team. Let's set the direction, council member, that says, hey, as a governance team, as we do our strategic planning, maybe sometime in the fall with a facilitator, is one of our priorities for this city over the next year and a half, three years, and certainly by ten years, to rid ourselves and then have a regular schedule of preventative maintenance and, uh, getting on top of deferred maintenance ten years from now, yes, including dangerous conditions by inspection of our employees of these locations. That is where we handle it. We're not ignoring it, no one's ignoring it. Nobody on this governance team and nobody working for the city wakes up and says, oh, who cares about tripping hazards, right, or who cares about gopher holes? We just wanna go through the process that makes sense without creating anything unnecessarily.
So you're, but if we had it on an agenda to speak from here as a council, you know, that, that in itself is doing the same thing.
Well, no, we're speaking generally. We're not saying over on Maple Street, there's a five-inch differential in the sidewalk because of that eucalyptus tree. And we're not gonna talk about individual, you know, hazards, we're gonna say in general, how are we doing on that schedule for grinding down the sidewalks that are uneven, right? Well, we identified fourteen different ones and we're working on this net. Whatever that would be, right, and we would be covering it that way without speaking to specific issues along those lines. Oh, you've had your hand up for a long time.
Yeah, going back to social media posts, so there's a Wayneimi Beach Festival going on. Can I promote the Wayneimi Beach Festival through my social media and inviting people, hey, come to the Wayneimi Beach Festival, it's a city-sponsored event?
Is it a city-sponsored event? Yeah, if it's an official city-sponsored event, then I, you know, with that, I assume we took all the steps necessary to ensure that whether it's Cal JPIA or somebody else is aware and, you know, we, you know, we're covered for those things. Um, then yeah, by all means, I think that's fine. If it's an official city-sponsored event, the only time it gets a little dicey is if it's something you really love and is happening and you're promoting it as well through the same medium and so forth. And then that you use to promote the city events, right? So for me, this is just me, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I like having a Mayor Bobby Martinez's social media presence and then a Bobby Martinez's social presence, right, social media presence for these different things. And only on this one do you promote city-specific, city-sponsored events, official ones. And on this one, you know, events that you enjoy and appreciate. And maybe even, because I, I am still a lawyer at heart, still licensed, I just don't, and represent individual clients. Uh, I might even want a little disclaimer on there, right, uh, at the beginning of that one, small letters, but a disclaimer nonetheless. That shows this is you, this is not a official, uh, I use this, um, uh, mechanism, this medium for promoting things that I enjoy and are not officially sponsored events of the city of Port Wayneimi. So I've seen that done and it looks pretty nice that way and they're both good. Yes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, is your mic on?
Social media page, but I have one under my name, um, without my title. And I generally put anything out there that's going on in the city, that's on the city webpage. Um, uh, things that I like that are not part of the city, that are other things that the community might like to go out to. So should I not be doing that? That's one of the things that I picked up because I'm hearing a lot that our community is not hearing about events. So I'm trying to do my part.
Oh, that's great.
Form, but what shouldn't I be doing?
Uh, to the extent you are able, my answer is the same to everybody who asked me that question and that is, um, make sure that it is clear, this is a Martha McQueen Lejeune, you know, personal preference here and not a city-sponsored event. Because you are a public figure as a council member of the city. And so I like that cleaner, two different social media context there. And by the way, that doesn't guarantee somebody's not gonna come back at us from the plaintiff's part, still trying to throw all this fecal matter against the wall and see what sticks here. But it is cleaner and I do like it better that way, but that's just one person's opinion.
Can you, let's just say you do have two separate Instagram accounts. And can you still promote stuff through your personal, because there's people that you'd be reaching through your personal that you won't reach through your other account?
I, I think then you defeat the purpose of having the two separate ones. Yeah, cause the one is the pro- private Bobby Martinez, cool citizen of Port Wayneimi and Ventura County, and the other one is the mayor.
And then that's just, that is just your advice. It, there isn't anything against having one Instagram account.
That is correct. That is Jerry Pressiato squarely one hundred percent advice based on experience.
To, to add a little bit more on that, the, the issue is, is that you can create public forums and limited public forums. And the argument becomes that if you haven't maintained a private space that's clearly an individual account, once you've created a public forum, you can no longer moderate it. You can no longer engage, engage in content discrimination. You can no longer remove posts. You lose pretty much all of your ability to control that. So, and, and as we saw with, uh, former President Trump, if you block somebody on some of those accounts, you can be individually liable as well.
Uh, you know, that's far more in-depth and I appreciate that answer and I will remember that statement the next time I share this information because that makes a lot of sense in that context. And so, um, have we created, we, we can't say, cause we don't have all the facts. But have we created this public forum under Bobby Martinez's Instagram account? You're the mayor, you're promoting these things. Other people comment and they do other things. We, we, it'd have to be looked at on a case-by-case basis, right, but, you know, we, we just wanna be clear and, and again, we speak with, um, a mindset and a filter and a paradigm of a parade of horribles, right? And try to anticipate and predict things that can happen to give you the best advice to keep you safe. This is all about helping five civic-minded, um, well-intended, loving Port Wayneimi citizens who are also government leaders be as safe as you can be. And create a safer and safe, um, Port Wayneimi as well in that context. So that's where this is all coming from. The public statements, I think that one's self-explanatory, right? Um, anything you say, you, you may say things like off the record, I'm not speaking as mayor, but does any of that really count? No, and I think you've probably all been misquoted, misunderstood, or, or, or misstated, uh, et cetera, and so it happens. So just be aware. Public statements are always going to have your council member hat on. I know there's no specific law that says that I'm covering Kevin right now for the moment, right? Um, but there's enough practice out there that that's the safest harbor I can give you. Don't do it, um, or don't say it thinking you can say it as a private citizen when you are a council member. When you are the mayor pro tem, et cetera. Any questions about that? So a couple others. Um, I know we covered this in the very beginning, but even the appearance of impropriety, what does it look like? There's my example, which was very private. In Original Joe's in downtown San Jose. But then there's others where, you know, we're a pretty small community where people know you long before you were a member of council. You were out there leading cleanups, you were out there doing a, a variety of things. And so you find yourself at the Marina, not far from here, and there is a developer who has an incredible boat. Maybe you've known them for a long time, long before you were a volunteer and a council member. And they take you on their boat. Everybody sees you getting on, there's, um, you know, the Marina website posting pictures of recent events and this developer who happens to be looking for a variance from our planning commission is taking you fishing for the day for whatever that thing is. But Jerry, I've been doing this for twenty-five years. I've been going on his annual weekend fishing trip for twenty-five years. You mean I gotta stop? That's my answer. Avoiding the appearance of impropriety, you will never regret, you won't. Um, having somebody have a field day because this person got their variance and now they're gonna be able to do X, Y, or Z, and now they're just all upset and then this picture of you on this boat with this fish, right, and a, and a cores in the other hand, problematic, problematic.
Do you remember that famous boat called Monkey Business?
All too well. If you're old enough, you remember that one, right? So just avoid that. And then, um, conversations with city employees about work. One of you shared with me the, a recent, um, experience where you understood that, um, employees were told they shouldn't engage with you, right? And, um, they shouldn't engage in dialogue or conversation with you, kinda like avoid you. Which I, I don't think is the, the best strategy in the world. I understand why somebody might give that, but I don't think it's the best strategy in the world and, and we do wanna keep you safe, but not to the point where all of a sudden you feel like persona non grata coming to the city, right? We do want you to be able to connect with the employees, but mostly as a leader, thank them. Be grateful for them. Express your appreciation for all they're doing for the citizens, stakeholders and businesses of this great city. That's something you can do, right, and, and I encourage you to do so. Catch them doing good, right? Don't feel the need to be hall monitors of the employees when you're here at the city because you are the ultimate bosses and you are. Because our ultimate boss is, uh, reports to you, right? Um, so that part is okay. Um, if, if questions come up about, and I have a, an employee I'm working with in another city in Southern Cal who has tremendous access to the council and talks to two council members on a regular basis. And they're not related, they're not dating, nothing like that. They just know that she is a get-it-done gal. I've always wanted to be a get-it-done guy because then people can really count on you, you know, but she's a get-it-done gal and so going around her boss, she's a manager, the boss is a director. They say, hey, they'll call her, they'll text her and say, hey, this island over on such and such city, uh, such and such part of the, the city needs this and boom, within forty-eight hours, it's done, it's done. And so now her boss gives her direction and whatnot and at very little impact on her if the, um, two council members aren't in agreement with what the director is saying or wants. Um, it started off as just conversations about, hey, what's your favorite part of the job? I like the stuff that's forward-facing to the residents. That's how it started, right? And that's fine, but it just went too far. And now this relationship I'm trying to undo because the director's ready to separate her for insubordination and for a number of other things. And, uh, how's that gonna fly when the city manager knows that she's the favorite of two council members, right? All kinds of untidy things happen when we go too far in our conversations. You know, including, uh, one that started like this. Uh, we'll say that Bobby is the employee, right, and I'm the council member. Hey Bobby, Maple Street Park, the way that, um, those garbage cans are being emptied on a more regular basis now? Fantastic. And that's how it starts, just like that. So there's one way to show appreciation, which is, hey, thanks for all you're doing. But then you get down into the weeds too much with details like that and all of a sudden it turns into this dysfunctional relationship and unhealthy relationship that could be creating all kinds of problems for managing that city on a day-to-day basis. So be careful. That's the potential pitfall, right? Now, I have no comment to add to that if somehow one of you is married to an employee of the city. That is what it is and you do your very best. As an elected person myself, being married to somebody in a unit, I was on a school board and my wife was heavily involved with a, a, um, parent group for gifted students and wanted to make sure that we were going to fund certain things. We kept it separate, right? I'm looking at her mayor pro tem. We kept it separate. She didn't bother me too much about things and I kept that firewall up pretty good to not let her know unprivileged information, things like that, because you have to. We trusted you to do that, all of you. And to my knowledge, you're doing a good job, you really are on so many things. We just have to polish up a few, so thanks. Thanks for keeping that balance and thanks for doing all that. It's not easy, it's not easy, I'll, I'll grant that. Especially for somebody who's not a very good secret keeper like me and had good news and wanted to share it, but I couldn't, right, kind of thing. So well done on balancing all that and those conversations. Stay out of those as much extent possible with all of it. So all I wanted to say here on this one, I'm looking at how that's two different colors. This that you have created, it's as good a document as I've seen like it. And so you're all familiar with this that I'm holding right here. It was signed by all of you, I believe, except Martha, sorry, Councilmember McQueen Lejeune, maybe it was just too much for me, Martha. Were you all here last November? I believe it was. Yeah. Oh, Rollins was here, Gama, Hernandez, Perez, Martinez, yeah. So the amended part last September, right, was voted on and, uh, on November ninth. And it shows all of you as unanimous vote, including Rollins, right, when this was done. According to the good records of our city clerk, which is why we have those. Do you all believe in this document and what it's intended for? It is a good document. And, and knowing that you all voted for it in the affirmative with the one exception, but I'm comfortable in my interview with, uh, Councilmember McQueen Lejeune that she is absolutely committed to this, then I applaud you. Because the challenge is, once we pass it, is it going to modify our behavior? And I do see that I'm out of time. Um, and so here's what I want to say to you. There are measures in here for structure driving behavior. There are civility aspects in here, there are professionalism aspects. There are nicely delineated statements in this thirty-four-page document that remind you of how, what, when, right, and where we do things. And the expected behavioral norms for professionalism, for courtesy and civility. And I applaud you for that. There are many councils that will refuse to pass a document like this because they don't wanna be bound by it. And then others will change and, and we'll try it again, we'll get some traction, it won't happen. But this is only a piece of paper if we're not adhering to it. And so, structure drives behavior. And my last thought. When it comes right down to it, in the world of checks and balances, this one, you have to check each other. Right? Uh, I understand how uncomfortable it is, cause I've been present for a lot of these. When a motion is made for a discussion on da-da-da-da and it's about something related to the censure of a member of the governance team. And it can get really challenging, I get that. But those typically don't come up just willy-nilly or randomly or pulled out of the sky. If somebody said something, did something, behaved in a certain way and you feel like that's not right and it's not in compliance with our own policy and procedures for this council, it is okay to say, hey, that is not okay. And if it's a pattern, like, okay. Clearly, they're not getting the message, you know, we do need to have on the agenda, you know, a, a discussion about, and of course, our city attorney would would ensure that we are crossing all our Ts and dotting all our Is for that agenda item to ensure we can discuss it. That doesn't follow that there will be adequate evidence for the rest of you to say, hey, this does warrant, right, uh, demotion from mayor pro tem. This does warrant censure, this does warrant, it may not be there based on the facts that are presented, but it might. And if not you, then who? Who's supposed to govern you in that way? So on the one hand, I say to you, it is uncomfortable in those moments. But you are not disch- discharging your duties and responsibilities. Uh, uh, a reference was made by our city attorney to basically a fiduciary duty, right? You are not conducting the people's business if you are not holding each other accountable to this part of what your role is as a governance team. So it's like, ah, I don't wanna do that. Now, I'm not saying you have to do it, that's the only way to solve it. It could be an individual dialogue with a person by our mayor or some other situation. Um, short of that, some informal resolution to it, a commitment to cease and desist, that kind of thing. But when it happens, it is just a process that we go through and that we're structured for and that you all agreed to. Right? And so we should do it if it's needed. And if it's not needed, then we won't do it. If it's brought up and not seconded, it won't happen. But if it's happening and in your heart, you know what's happening, you need to support it, at least through its due process components. And then see what happens. You can't just always avoid it and expect it to change. You just cannot, right, as part of that. Well, I started off with this. Individually, I appreciated meeting each one of you. I don't believe with the talent level and experience that you bring to the table that there is a weak link on this city council. I believe that you have what it takes to be the best version of a governance team for the city of Port Wayneimi to achieve what it can achieve. If you all get into alignment with all of this and avoid things like those adverse impact tones. Avoid thing like making statements personal. Right? And avoid anything that has any appearance that you are about your business and not the city's business. And sometimes those can be very muddy for those of us watching you work. So I share with you that if you stay in your role, setting a vision, passing policies and procedures, championing, communicating, ensuring people know what we're trying to accomplish, and then hiring a good city manager to be the boots on the ground to get it done and move that needle of achievement, you're gonna do well by the city. You're gonna achieve much and we're all gonna applaud you for it. The disharmony that has happened in the past does not have to reflect our future. You will get as much credit or more for creating more harmony going forward than the than the disharmony we've experienced in the past and you'll deserve every ounce of that credit. Thank you so much for making time for me today. And uh, just as a sneak preview, in July, we'll be talking more about um communication and um conflict resolution, how we deal with it, how we manage it. Because conflict's going to happen, we all know that, right? That should be the bumper sticker, conflict happens, not other things happen, right? So thanks, everybody. I appreciate your time and your attentiveness. I mean that to all five of you, thank you.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Presiado. Guess we're, we're done with our meeting. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, July third at four PM. I'd like to adjourn the meeting, the time is now five oh eight PM.